I think we've got everyone here that'll be attending from the planning board today. First item of business is to review and approve the agenda that we've got for today. Has anyone had a chance to look at that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any discussion? Having heard none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our June 6 meeting. Has everyone received the minutes and had a chance to review saying?
Just a note, I had the wrong date in the first paragraph where I list who was here, so I changed that.
Okay, so noted. The only thing I noted was Mr. Winkenwerder's name was misspelled.
That's not a new.
No, that is not it.
I tried.
Yeah. Phonetically, you got it correct. But it's W.I.N.K. E.N.D.E.R.D.E.R., is that correct?
W.I.N.K. E.N.W.E.R.D.
Okay, thank you, John.
And I would ask that anybody who speaks today, if you'd spell your last name for me, that would greatly help me. Thank you.
Do we have, other than those two amendments to the minutes, do we have any other comments?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, on page two. Would be at the bottom of the page, the fourth bullet has to do with Marcia Zerlip's comment. The reason I'm pointing that out is that all the other public comments state whether the individual was more or less for or against the proposal, and it just says that Mrs. Zerlip read a prepared statement. And if I remember correctly, hers was opposed.
I agree with that. That's my recollection as well. Could we amend it accordingly? Jillian, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Hudgens, thank you. Second?
Second.
Philip seconds. Any further discussion?
Did you listen?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no, motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda for today is a public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment. Richard Kubica?
Kubica.
Kubica? Richard Kubica has applied to rezone tax lot pin number 9699 hyphen 31 hyphen 7744. It's also known as 596 Old U.S. Highway 70 and 9699 dash 41 dash 2317, also known as 606 Old U.S. Highway 70 in Swananoa. It is currently zoned residential district R3, and he would like to change that to Neighborhood Service District NS. Debbie, if you would, please give us staff's overview and recommendation.
Yes, sir. These two lots together are 5.23 acres. Both of them are zoned R3, and Mr. Kubica has applied to rezone them to NS. The properties are located on the south side of Old U.S. 70, just west of the intersection of Cavalier Lane. Mr. Kubica owns the western lot that he's applied to rezone, where he currently has a commercial business that is nonconforming in the existing residential zoning. He would like to also buy a portion of the eastern lot, which is currently owned by Bart Jones and is part of the Carolina Ready Mix Concrete Company's property. And on that portion that he wants to purchase, he would like to construct an additional building to expand his commercial business. Within the area, there is a mix of residential uses, commercial and industrial uses. The change would be consistent with the comprehensive land use plan update, as the update indicates the NS is designed to allow for a mix of residential, commercial, business, and service uses in limited areas at key intersections leading to residential neighborhoods. And would be consistent with the surrounding uses. The planning department does recommend approval of the request. Sort of as a side note to this, I would like to mention that this whole property is within the 100-year flood plain, and it would be more appropriate to have a business rather than people living in that, having it developed as residential and living in harm's way. We did receive a letter from Mary Garner. She had intended to have a representative here to speak, but was, is not going to be able to have that. She was opposed to the rezoning. The letter did have seven names attached to it due to increased noise, dust, and a negative impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kubica, would you like to come up and tell us about your application, please?
(inaudible).
Yeah, please speak into the mic, and again, introduce yourself and spell your name, last names, please.
All right, my name is Richard Kubica. I'm the one that owns the western lot that I'm asking to be rezoned. You spell my last name, K.U.B.I.C.A.
Thank you.
My name's Bart Jones, J-O-N-E-S, and I own Carolina Ready Mix.
Thank you, Bart.
I'm here this morning to make the case that we would like to rezone the property in question because we feel it's entirely consistent with the businesses that are in a general vicinity. And when we purchased the land in 2008, we took into careful consideration what was around and what was located nearby that would be beneficial for not only our business, but for all the businesses involved. So we specialize in concrete foundations and flat work. And the time is coming where we need to expand and install a building to work out of. And we've learned that the land has been zoned R3. So we filed for, to have it rezoned NS. And our intent is to build a building on this land and operate out of it. Eventually, we'd like to pour some concrete blocks inside the building and minor precast products. So we feel we're entirely consistent with what is there. There's a ready-mix plant within 50 yards of this land, a stone quarry right down the road, multiple fueling stations. We are within a mile or so of I-40. And rezoning the land will really not change what we're doing today as far as working hours. If anything, dust and noise would be reduced by allowing us to build the building. We've already done a substantial job in improving the land, and the immediate adjacent landowners have literally thanked us for taking a piece of land that was less desirable and cleaning it up and turning it into something that's not an isolate. So that was our case.
Okay.
The only thing that I would add is that Carolina Ready Mix owns 10 acres, two five-acre plots. When the zoning became effective, for whatever reason, one of those lots was zoned NS and the other one was zoned R3. And I didn't really realize that until we were considering selling a little piece of the property to Rich to expand his business. And it dawned on me that half of our concrete business was zoned R3 and the other half was zoned NS. So it seems like it may have been a mistake in the first place to zone half of the property one thing and the other half another. So as the recommendation letter states, it would be less nonconforming if both pieces were now zoned NS. That's the only thing I've got to add.
Where exactly would the building be located? In which, I mean, will it be on the western side of the property?
It would be more majority of on the western. It may sneak into the eastern side.
I had an opportunity to go out there and look at it over the weekend, and I'm familiar with it, aside from my visit this weekend. I'm familiar with it, the history of it and so forth. And I would agree that what's there now is an improvement over what was there. And it sounds like with the addition of the building, it would even improve it that much further. But I don't know if anyone else has had an opportunity to go look at it or not, but does anyone have?
I've done the same. I've looked at it, and I concur. I think it would be an upgrade of what's there.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
Just one curiosity. Do you gentlemen have any way of controlling stormwater runoff from your business?
We do. I've got a stormwater permit that we have through, oh, I can't think of their name now. We've got an engineering firm that manages that for us and updates that for our concrete business.
And Mr. Quebec, will you?
I currently do not have a stormwater plan in place.
Do you know if you'll, you will have to have one?
I'm not for sure, but if we do, we would comply.
Okay.
For sure, yeah. We basically just use the land the way it was, but we've improved it, and the building that was there is what we're operating out of. So as we move forward with a design and prints and site plans, if it calls for stormwater, we would definitely comply.
Joe, I think that they definitely would have to have one. First of all, I think you'll have to have a grading permit to build the building, and in doing so, that'll come to the attention of Mike Goodson, and Mike will require the stormwater permit. They go hand in hand, don't they, Debbie, basically?
If the property's over an acre, then yes.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Do we, would someone like to?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Excuse me.
Second by Mr. Hudgens.
Mr. Chairman, we do need the public comment first.
Mr. Hughes?
We have to do the public comment first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, thank you. Just if you would, go back and take a seat. And we'll open the process for this application to public comment. Does anyone, would anyone like to come forth and speak either for or against the application to rezone this piece promptly? Well, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Do you want to hear from the staff on this there? We did on the front end. Okay, sorry. Yeah, did we? Yeah, yeah, we did, we did. So we'll close the public comment session. Okay, now, we've got a motion, we've got a second.
And the motion, we need to state that the motion, that the requested zoning is consistent with the Bonham County Land Use Plan of 2006, and is designed to allow, as it's designed to allow for a mixture of residential and commercial businesses. And it's reasonable and in the public interest, and would allow for a commercial business in the area that allows a wide variety of commercial uses.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Hudgens. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay.
This recommendation will go to the Board of Commissioners. Do you know when it's scheduled? We will have that scheduled and advertised.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of zoning standards for rooming houses and I've got a, I've given this a thought, and I've had some discussion with a few of the board members, as well as John, the other day, and had kind of a plan of attack. And I'll tell you what that was, and then I'll let you know that that got derailed by a Senate bill that is awaiting the governor's signature down in Raleigh. I haven't had a chance to look at the bill. We just received it, I understand, the other day. None of us have had a chance to digest it. But anyway, what my plan was, it appears to me, having listened to the last meeting's public comments, we've got two issues related to vacation rentals. One is where they would be allowed or not allowed, and the other is regulating that industry, cottage industry, I guess you would call it. And I felt like what we needed to do is probably proceed with one issue independent of the another from the standpoint of discussion purposes. That is to see if the board would tackle each issue independent of the other, and then we'll marry the two up a little later on and this type of thing. But again, what I was hearing was we've got the issue of where to allow vacation rentals, and the other is the regulatory piece. And having the industry to come onboard and be consistent with the hotel, B&amp;B business and this type of thing. Now, having said that, this Senate Bill 683, the Senate, as you may know, has adjourned in Raleigh, is sitting on the governor's desk to be signed. And in my opinion, she'll probably sign it because she's got bigger fish to fry than this and a lot of battles going on down there, and I don't think this is one she'd choose to battle the Senate on. Jillian may know more about this than any of us. Could you give us just a brief overview of your understanding of what this bill does?
The brief overview as far as vacation rentals and whether or not we could have any sort of registration system or require an inspection of vacation rentals through the county zoning ordinance, this bill sort of stops that. It affects long-term rentals of single-family houses too, but Michael's taken a look at it, and I think I'm going to let Michael explain it. He can probably explain it better than I can, so.
And I'll point out first that I saw this first at 8:45 this morning. Looks like it was ratified by the Senate and General Assembly on Saturday. A quick read of this leads me to think that this is really intended to hit minimum housing standards, like the city's minimum housing code, minimum housing standards, where they maybe fee generating processes, yearly inspection requirements. It's just shooting those down and minimizing the amount of fees that can be charged at all. In terms of passing new bills, it looks like if we try to insert into our drafts that you have to get yearly permitting, you have to have a yearly CO, unless, just as a general requirement, the answer's going to be no, we cannot put that in there by my quick reading. If it was a housing situation or a vacation rental complex or multifamily complex where they had a lot of complaints in recent history, then it looks like they could implement or after a public hearing and after a plan is developed, sort of set up a method to go out there and check these places to make sure you bring them up to code and bring them up to standard. But unless there's something obvious from exterior, or unless there's obviously something from a complaint from residents or people that come in there and rent, then no, you can't just make that a requirement. There's nothing that would prevent the fire marshal from doing what the fire marshal has to do, but you can't stick in their permitting and fee requirements.
So that may trump a big piece of my proposal, at least as to how we proceed. So at this point in time, I think until Michael has a chance to review that proposed bill carefully, I see no need to discuss moving forward with permitting regulations or proposed permitting regulations and this type of thing.
I will just pitch in, Mr. Chairman, if I could. There doesn't appear to be anything in my, again, my quick read of the bill that would prevent general zoning requirements from being in place. As we currently have them drafted, they're mostly setback requirements, buffer requirements, that kind of general zoning requirements appear to be okay by Senate Bill 683.
Okay.
Michael, would you explain one more time why this bill came about?
Oh, I have no idea. I'm just guessing. My guess is that it's probably, you know, with our right-leaning legislature as it is at this time, maybe there's complaints from the industry that regulation thwarts the free and unfettered use of property. So a bill, well, any local zoning ordinance, municipality or county that has a, in many cases, I think you could argue it's their fee generating policies to go out and look once a year to make sure rental units meet a minimum housing standard and get a yearly CO and pay a yearly fee. This just shoots that down. So it's going to be wider than that because it also says vacation rentals, rentals and multifamily housing. So unless there's something obvious from the outside, you cannot put in the ordinance that you're going to have yearly inspections and you're going to pay a yearly fee. It has, it's going to back, go back to complaint-driven things. And really, in terms of having an ordinance that we can enforce, maybe this is a good thing, because we don't want to put something on the books that we're not going to be able to enforce, but we want to have something that's fair for everybody. But again, we could, we could stick with our zoning aspects, setbacks, buffers, and whatnot.
So I think what we have been restricted to review, of course, is the zoning aspect. That was piece number one that I mentioned, the first piece of the pie. And that is whether to allow vacation rentals in areas that are currently zoned R1, R2, RLD, and I think there's one other out there.
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam, Beaver Dam District, that type of thing. Thank you, Joe. So having said that, that was kind of a curveball, because I think, I was, thought we had a direction kind of set about an hour ago that we were headed in, and maybe we could make some progress. But does anyone on the board have any comments related to this or ideas? And if not, we'll move forward, I think, with discussing allowing vacation rentals in these other districts. Or is there any other course of action someone may have that is a little bit better than what I suggested that we might head down? I don't know what we do. I think we're restricted, though, obviously, by the Senate bill at this point, which you...
Can I ask one question? And I know that you quickly read this, Michael, but is it the fee that's the problem, or is it the permit period? I mean, it...
Just that whole process?
The whole process.
A yearly requirement for a CO and paying fees.
So any complaint driven that...
If you have a vacation rental, or you have some unit, and there's clearly something glaringly wrong from the outside, we can go in and inspect it. I mean, that's, that's the job of the building inspector in many instances, but to build it in that there's going to be a process, that you go in and check them every year, that's what they've...
Does it, does it prevent you from doing it initially?
No.
So you could require an initial permitting and an initial inspection?
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not ready to give you an opinion on that. I wouldn't say that if, I can't say right now that if I wanted to start using my house as a vacation rental, can I come down there and, can the county require that they come in and get a permit and have an initial CO?
I'll add on the end of that, and maybe it's something to research, that if we had some kind of...
Well, I found, this language right here, you can't have an ordinance that require that an owner or manager of residential rental property enroll or participate in any governmental program as a condition of obtaining a CO. So that, that may make me think that maybe we can't put it as an upfront requirement.
And the only other thing I would ask, if you would kind of look at, would be if we had, let's say we had a problem rental somewhere, as we've heard before with comments that have come before the board, would there be anything we could do to, you know, tie in some homeowner registration and/or complaint-driven process to have that ended? I mean, as you're looking forward, isn't it...
Yeah, I think you'd depend on the complaint. I know we've heard some comment about...
But if there's no permit to revoke?
...noises and whatnot, and, I mean, is that a sheriff matter, or is it a permitting matter? If it's a permitting matter, I think we're limited.
And this only applies to residential? This would not apply to hotels and existing?
There is no mention of hotels, motels, but I think it also says you can't set up a, I believe what it's saying is you can't set up a standard for multifamily rentals, vacation rentals that'd be different from anybody else in the same or similar industry.
If you can't have regulations of any kind, and there's a complaint from a neighbor, how do you lay the complaint up against no standards?
Well, they have language here at the beginning. I mean, if you, if you see something from the outside, and it causes you, causes you to have reasonable cause to believe that an unsafe, unsanitary, or otherwise hazardous or unlawful condition may exist, then you have grounds to go in and have a building inspection. And then it defines what reasonable cause is.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be because you have pink paint, obviously. It'd have, it'd have to be something substantive.
Mr. Chairman, it would seem to me that before we go forward, everybody needs to do their due diligence on this.
Yeah, I agree with you, Joe.
I concur. I mean, this is, this is a lot to throw at us, and...
I had read this earlier, actually, and the wording's actually changed since then. I don't know if they amended it or not, but is that what it is, the fifth version? So, and also, too, it seems to speak of, the only way we can go into it is regarding safety as it speaks to, like, housing safety. It doesn't have anything that I've read, and I haven't read this current version, about complaint-driven nuisance type of complaints, so.
No, no.
Okay.
It doesn't, but I think that a lot of times, you know, it's, one meets with the other.
Okay.
If you have problems, and they're nuisance problems, maybe there's an unsafe or hazardous condition on the property. But again, what they're saying...
See, I can tie that together.
Yeah, and they're defining reasonable cause to be able to have an inspection. Landlord or owner has a history of more than two verified violations in the past 12 months. Complaint that substandard conditions exist. And the inspection department has actual knowledge of an unsafe condition? How they get that, I don't know. Or violations of local ordinance or codes are visible from the outside of the property.
Well, I think what we need to do, then, is let's let Mike review this carefully over the next week or two before our next board meeting. And if you can, Mike, kind of get back with us, or through staff, get back with us and let us know your legal opinion related to that piece of the puzzle. And aside from that here today, I think we ought to just move forward with the public comment again. Does that make sense? Everybody okay with that? Okay, well, let's do so. So we'll go to item number six on the agenda, which is public comment. Who would like to come up and speak regarding vacation rental policies?
Or anything else. Or anything else.
Yeah. Marcia. Please state your name when you come up.
My name is Marcia Zerlip, S-Z-E-R-L-I-P, and I'm a resident of Bonham County. Thank you for letting me speak today. You know, over the last several years, this board has approved a fair number of residential subdivisions. It said it's good for the economy, creates jobs, it's going to bring people in here to buy houses, be permanent residents, pay taxes, spend money. It's going to be a great thing for the county, and that's what's happened. The county then decided, let's formalize this in a zoning ordinance, which they did. They created zones, RLD, R1, R2, incorporating the very things that you said when you approved the subdivisions. Same problem, same situation in Beaver Dam. We have some unique conditions there. We have issues with access, topography, landslide risks, steep slopes, lack of water in sewer. We had our own ordinance to take care of all that. The county said, don't worry about it. When we pass a county ordinance, we're going to take care of that. Everything will be just fine. We said, are you sure that you promise? They said, yes, we promise. They put it in the ordinance, and yes, it's there. I think that this proposal to expand the permitted use to all the zones... I think that this proposal to expand the permitted use to all the zones is going to break that promise, break all those promises to all of us. What you're being asked to do now is to undermine that very ordinance. Somebody is asking you to unregulate, to deregulate by coming in the back door. If you make vacation rentals or permitted use in every single district, what you're doing, in effect, is going back to the way we were before we had zoning. If you can do it anyplace, that's really not zoning. And I had a professor of economics who called that once opportunistic land use planning. It's not fair and it's not right. I think you have to recognize, all of us recognize, that a vacation rental is a business. You use an asset, you make money, it's a business. You have business permission to do it in a number of districts already under this zoning ordinance. You have them operating businesses as a non-conforming use now in those protected residential districts that were part of the promises that the commissioners made. I do not see how you can possibly allow a business use to be a permitted use in a residential zone. The two things are so opposite and so, so completely different from what the very basis of zoning is. What I'd like to see, and apparently I have just been co-opted by the state legislature, I would like to have seen some regulations to take care of those non-conforming uses to make certain that they did work well with the residential zones that they were in. Apparently, that's going to become an issue right now. But I am asking you, please, honor the promises that the commissioners made. Be cognizant of the issues that there are and the special needs that there are in residential areas. Do not let a business become part of that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I fail to remind everyone, some of you, I don't think, have been here before, at least in front of this particular board, but we've got three minutes that you're allowed to speak, and that's what, that's what happened there. But thank you very much, Marcia. Again, please identify yourself. Tell us where you're from.
My name is Eva Stewart, S-T-E-W-A-R-D, and I'm from Buncombe County. Prior to the county zoning of the vacation rental homes, we had a vacation rental home. And we were very disturbed by the fact that the county had started regulating something that we purchased and eventually turned into a vacation rental home because we were trying to save the home from foreclosure. So, I appreciate the board's movement, the planning commission's movement, to try to consider altering the current law so that it is a stronger basis both in law and reason. And I say law because, as I read the Constitution, we see both the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment making it a taking of a property based upon an economical viable use by depriving somebody of their economic, of their property based on an economic use. And that's exactly what this conditions are, are doing. It's also interfering with contracts that we've placed on the property based on the contracts clause. The other argument I have is based upon reason out of just economic daily living. My husband is a builder, I'm a realtor. We've been here for over seven years, and our industry has been hit very, very hard in the last three years. It's been very difficult to sustain home prices and to sustain jobs in the process of trying to live in this county. The vacation rental home that we have allows us to produce jobs. It allows us to hire house cleaners, lawn maintenance people, repair people. The patrons that we have come to the home, we're not patrons that would normally go to a hotel. There are families coming in that want a vacation. If they can't vacation here, they'll go to another state. They oftentimes are looking for homes to purchase. They want a home to test out before they purchase here, so it drives in a good economic income into the, the county. We also pay taxes, just like everyone else. We pay even more taxes. We pay state income tax on the revenue that we make, which is not very much. After you pay the mortgage, it basically just saves the house from foreclosure. We pay state taxes, county taxes, we pay property taxes. This is not a lucrative business, but it does prevent foreclosure. It also helps keep people employed. And we have never in five years have had a problem with a neighbor complaining, never. So, people will not come back to a vacation rental home if the house is not well-maintained. If you want recurring income, you've got to take care of your homes. So, I would just ask the board to really consider all these points, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Andrew Brooks, spelled B-R-O-O-K-S. I live in Buncombe County. I'm a property owner. I believe in zoning, and I commend the planning commission to look at redefining the zoning that you put in place. Some of the definitions you currently have do need to be changed, such as for the boarding, rooming house and vacation property, not consistent with state, with the Vacation Rental Act. So, just by redefining that, that's going to be important to you. For me, I purchased, I came to western North Carolina several years ago. I purchased property. I specifically purchased a property next door to me in a subdivision because I believe that I wanted to be in a place that did make sure things were maintained, there were covenants and restrictions, wanted to maintain a good community environment. I did make sure, however, when I bought that second property, because it was going to be an investment property, that it was one that could be rented for both long-term and short-term rental. I made sure I checked with the board at that time of purchase. I've since then gotten a letter saying that it is a conforming use for that subdivision. That subdivision now is under the current zoning R1, which means I have kind of a problem because I've rented it both long-term and short-term. I purchased it for that. Under the current situation, I am grandfathered, so to speak, because if right now my short-term contracts expire and I have somebody that comes in and wants to buy a house and wants to live here for a year, and I negotiate a good rate for a year, I have just lost my grandfathering because it goes past 180 days. And now, when they leave, I no longer can re-rent as a vacation rental, one that I've remodeled, I bought for over $250,000, put $70,000 into remodeling it so it is an attractive vacation rental. It really has wide implications. The people that rent my property, they aren't freeloaders. In fact, two of my rentals that were long-term, they did more damage to the property than any of my short-term rentals. My short-term people come in, they go, they use the facilities in this county, they bring their bikes so they can ride the parkway, they, they bring recreational equipment and they need a garage. There are families that want to be in a home situation, they don't want to be in a hotel. I think the free market system should allow us to compete. And if there are problems, on a short-term renter, I can have them evicted within hours. Long-term renter, I can't evict them for months. My association can't even kick them out. They love my rental. It's the first house entrance into the community, and it's pristine, and it stays that way because I want to continue to, to, to bring in business. And when I'm not renting it, long-term or short-term, I open it up for missionaries, people in the community, my family, my friends. I really thank you for looking at this and reconsidering how it's going to be well-defined in your zoning program.
Thank you very much. Very good comments. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Mary Poulos. I live, that's P-O-U-L-O-S. I live at 115 Black Oak in Asheville. We purchased this home in 2007, and at the time, we were currently living in Atlanta. And I then used my home as a vacation rental. The tenants that I had were spectacular. I charged top dollar. They left my, my home in great condition, and they came here to spend money. They would attend the auctions and the art galleries. They'd go out to dinner every night, and I know this because I would keep a relationship up with them, and we would email back and forth. Never have I ever, ever had a problem, and never would anyone stay in a hotel for a month or two months. It was just not in the same league. They would go out to dinner every night, they would shop, they would attend the festivals. It was a wonderful relationship. We have since moved to this home and have been here for a year. It's a little small, so we're looking to buy another. And this 115 would make a wonderful, it has made a wonderful vacation rental. And the only thing I would ask you to consider is these people are coming here and spending money. They're coming here, as the realtor said, looking for homes to buy. They are an important part here in keeping our economy alive. And I understand that you, zoning is an important issue, but what about the free enterprise system? I charge top dollar, and these people are calling me back to see if they can rent our home. Well, we now live in that home, so I can't do it. But I, I, again, I employ a cleaning lady that comes in weekly. I'm paying her. I have a handyman who does the lawn maintenance and he keeps the house up. I'm employing people when I'm doing the vacation rental, and I'm bringing people here who are using the restaurants and the facilities. I really, there's, this is an important component. And frequently, they're coming here to look for a home to buy, as the realtor said. That has been my experience. I have never, out of the 18 tenants that I've had, ever, had a problem with any one of them, top-notch. So, I just ask you to consider that. Our restaurants need to be, they need people to come in and use the facility. We need stores. We need, we, we really should not overlook this. And, and I want you to know that I am not in, in competition with any hotel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is John Maltry, that's M-A-L-T-R-Y, and like other people, I, my family came here recently in 1700, 1790, under the name of Miller. So, we've seen the area transition a great deal. I should say, well, I say, we, the family. I'm also a hotel owner, motel. We've had, a business has been running here for, you know, 70, 80 years in that area. We got into vacation rental business because the hotels do not meet the demand of vacation rental customers, customers, excuse me. A lot of people can do hyperbole on this. I speak from the fact, vacation rentals and hotel people are not the same. Basically, what we, our clientele are families who want to have a get-together. They would find it very cumbersome to stay in a hotel motel situation. They want to stay in rooms where they can get together in the living room and talk over old times and, and get together. You're paying $2,000 to $3,000 a week for these places that the families, you know, extended family may split up. So, we got into this business because of the hotel situation. I was turning customers away. I also know that if they did not stay with us, most likely, they'd be going over to Gatlinburg, places like that. They would not hang around Asheville. Most of my customers come for the vacation rental first, and then what they're going to do, second, which is kind of hard to believe. You think they all come here because of the Biltmore House and the hiking. No, there's a lot of other nice places, a lot of things to see in the Carolinas outside of Buncombe County. They want a vacation rental. The next point, too, is that so far, knock on wood, we've had no complaints. We do a lot of hands-on management of our vacation rentals. I think the only place I've heard of complaints, other people, is when you have somebody staying there and they can't get a hold of somebody to take care of an issue, and that may happen sometimes with property management companies that do that. We manage our own, we have maintenance people on hand, we have rules and regulations. For example, we don't take anybody under the age of 25, which is perfectly legal to do that. We also have, we comply with the Vacation Rental Act explicitly and very selective on our customers. You know, we just don't open it up. It's, the objective is to maintain it in a nice environment. Not only do you have, you know, $200,000 to $300,000 tied up in an asset, but you also have a lot of furnishings and things like that inside that comes with that. And then, the last thing, I just to comment, is that I do know that vacation rentals in residential areas can coexist if they're properly managed. You know, the, you know, animal house environment, I've never seen that, it's very different here, what we're dealing with. They've had bad experiences in Gatlinburg because they're not properly managed, I think, at times. So, thank you for your time and hope we get this passed.
Thank you, too. Anyone else?
Oh, this is something I meant to give you guys. This is, if you don't mind me-
That's fine, go ahead.
This is just a, you know, I had it here, this is three of the cities that have used vacation rental in residential areas, and if you guys had a chance, you can look at it. Just the requirements that they have in addition to what you call a local here in Buncombe County.
Okay. Hi.
My name is Susan Andrew, and I live in Buncombe County. First of all, I think if you have a vacation rental and it's a private residential home, no matter what, you're in competition with someone that has a business as a hotel or a bed and breakfast or whatever. If you don't have to go by some of the same rules that they have to go by, you're still in competition. It's like the Baptist church having a gym, and there are facilities where people can go work out or play basketball or whatever. The churches don't pay taxes, so they are in competition with businesses also. I don't think anybody thinks of that. Another thing I think that's wrong in Buncombe County or in the state of North Carolina, I don't know if anybody in here has, like, I know the lady said she's from Atlanta or lived in Atlanta. If you have a second home in another state, you pay big taxes if you do not live in it. I don't know about renting it out. Probably, if you're not living in it, you still have taxes. We have a, a lake house. We don't live there, and it's in South Carolina. And you pay a lot more taxes for not living there. So, I think one of the problems we have in the state of North Carolina is if people have second homes, they're renting them out, and they're probably, I don't know if they pay the same taxes, but taxes is another thing. My husband and I live in a gated community. We bought our property because we wanted to live in a gated community. We didn't want to have people renting out. Those were what we thought were the restrictions in our community. And we now have a lodge in our community that's rented out nightly, weekly, however the people want to rent it, because there aren't restrictions on it. They live in Charleston. They come up maybe once a month and stay or whatever, and they have as many as 10 cars at that house often when they rent it out. And we don't have any say right now because I think they're grandfathered under that, and we don't want it to happen in our neighborhood of other homes because we bought that for the privacy. And I do think the biggest thing is the competition, and if you live in a residential neighborhood, and most of the time, when you buy a piece of property, if you look at the contract, it says residential or single-family home use. And I think that's what we're fighting, and I think we're going to continue to fight it, and I think the tax aspect would be another thing that the, the people of Asheville and the mountains specifically should look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Is there anyone else? Mr. Ganz?
My name is Bob Ganz, G-A-N-Z, and I'm a Buncombe County resident. I would plan to talk about the mix of businesses in residential areas. I think Marcia did an excellent job of that, and frankly, I think that is a key component of, of what you guys have to consider. They simply don't mix. The, the framers of our zoning ordinances were smart enough to do that, to, to separate out businesses from residential areas. And as Marcia said, you're being asked to, to start to basically do away with pieces of the original zoning ordinance, which, as Marcia does, I think, is inappropriate. What I would like to speak to is this issue of I can do anything I want with my property. I agree with that. I should be able to do whatever I want with my property. And I guess if I lived out in the middle of nowhere- And I guess if I lived out in the middle of nowhere, where what I did didn't affect anybody else, then, hey, what's wrong with that? Subject to certain regulations, of course. But the simple fact is, giving people the permission to do whatever they want with their property doesn't consider the effect that those people have on the rest of us. I have, Marcia has, Susan has, even the Realtors have every right to be protected from those inconsiderate people who would trample on the rights of the rest of us. That's what zoning is all about. Now, I hear all this stuff about, I've never had any complaints. I'm available 24/7. You heard a lot of this last time. But the simple fact is that a lot of what I see quoted in the newspaper, in testimony here, just isn't true in my experience. Yes, and we've said this before, 95, 98% of the people who come to these vacation rentals are exactly how all these folks would tell us about. But unfortunately, the 3% to 5% are inconsiderate of our property. They do things in our residential areas that make our residents feel unsafe. And I think what this law does, obviously, I haven't had the time to read it, I just saw it for the first time a half hour ago, but what that law says is, you can't regulate them. That's ridiculous. If you can't regulate them, at very least, being able to stop them from doing the kinds of things that cause problems in the neighborhood, you really have no choices, I see it. You really have to keep them out of these residential areas and let them exist where they're permitted to exist right now, in the multiple-use areas, the commercial areas and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ganz. Is there anyone else? Mr. Craig?
Good morning. My name is Kelly Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R, and I'm a resident of Buncombe County. First, a couple of things. I've sat here for several meetings now and I want to say that there currently are about, I think, 1,500 vacation rental properties in Buncombe County. That's the number I've heard. So, what's been lost in some of this discussion is that there, if whatever happens here, that there won't be any vacation rentals, properties available, that is not correct. Also want to say that the traditional accommodation industry is not opposed to vacation rentals. I think what gets lost sometimes is this either for or against. Right now, vacation rental properties through the third-party folks like Graybeard contribute about $150,000 to the Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority's budget. So, we understand the need and that does fill a need. I was reading this weekend Frank Luntz's book about winning. It's about leadership. And he said that policymakers really grapple with fear in trying to understand, address, and to mitigate people's fear, particularly people in the community. And I thought about that in some of the discussions back and forth and just kind of proposed, suggest a couple of things that you move forward with this policy change, if in fact it changes, is that the fears of the neighborhoods. And I think that's a very, very legitimate fear. So, you got to think about what was the intent of the Buncombe County Commissioners and other policymakers prior to you all sitting here about when they said, yes, we're going to do countywide zoning and making sure that that covenant is still in place. There's the fear of a sudden spike in the number of accommodation rental properties in Buncombe County. Just like the lady who talked about forest foreclosure goes, there are, there's about 120 tax-collecting, occupancy tax-collecting properties in Buncombe County. They fear on a daily basis whether they will go into receivership, whether they'll go bankrupt. So, there's this fear about how will a sudden spike say, is it three additional properties or is it 300? I don't know the answer to that. There's a fear, an evil playing field. It's interesting here that Fire Marshal said, just in this piece that staff prepared, they do not inspect individual houses and do not think the Fire Marshal Office has enough staff to inspect each vacation rental in the county. That's like saying, the trades are hurting right now, you don't need an electrical license to go out and be an electrician. We're going to waive that. It's the same sort of, I think, analogy. I think there's also a fear, and I think the Graybeards of the world, probably legitimate fear, if they don't get new inventory in there, what's going to happen if there is a, quote, a moratorium? We heard that the average lifespan of a vacation rental is about five to seven years. Well, if they want to be a viable business, how do you accommodate that? So, that's certainly a fear to consider. I also feel, the last thing is the fear about what does happen if things are not regulated. I used to be in the music industry and I always remember the Who concert in Cincinnati, Ohio, festival seating, if you remember that. A lot of people killed, that went away. Now, we had the theater seating. And it's those sort of things that, as the proprietors and the umbrella marketers of the brand of Asheville, the existing brick and mortar people and the Graybeards of the world, I think do a good job and some of the other people that have private units too. But when you start not regulating some things and you have a bunch of inventory comes in, we have one or two bad experiences, people die. I will tell you what, it will make national news. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Craig?
My name is Chip Craig, C-R-A-I-G, and I am the Graybeard Realty person that was referred to, Graybeard Realty of the world. This planning board back in February approved an allowance to vacation rentals in a vote of 6 to 2. The only reason we're here now is that the hotel industry and the B&amp;B folks got upset about that and were fearful of the competition. Hoteliers and B&amp;B people bring up safety issues, noise concern. Last meeting, I heard about drug use at all these houses, frat parties, anything that we can think of, horrible things that we can think of. But what it really comes down to is fear of competition. We don't compete. You've heard that before. We do not compete. Our reservationists do not get on the phone and talk to someone that's comparing a hotel to a cabin. They're comparing cabins to cabins. If they don't rent from us and a cabin, they're going to, if cabins aren't allowed, they're going to go to Gatlinburg, Lake Lure, outside the area. We don't compete. And if we did compete, should a zoning ordinance be used to eliminate competition? Is that the purpose of a zoning ordinance? Is it to choose one business over my business? From listening to B&amp;B folks and the hotel folks and other folks, all hell's going to break loose if y'all allow vacation rentals. Well, until December 2009, vacation rentals were allowed. There weren't problems. When's the last time you heard about a safety incident at a vacation rental? I mean, we've talked about the safety concerns. Have you ever heard of one? I've never had one. I've been doing this 11 years. I'm going to give you all a paper I wrote, this three pages, this analyzes the statistics and has some stats that come into play. But just a few things to bring up. 8% of national tourism is tied to vacation rentals. A typical vacation rental in Buncombe County generates $40,000 a year in tourism dollars, and that does not include lodging. And I have, how I figured that out in this document I'm giving you. We do, we, Graybeard Realty has rented to a fraternity twice. We've made 22,000 reservations and we had two frat parties. They were gone the next morning. That's one out of 11,000. Cleaning costs, I estimate, again, it's in this paper, but based on how we, what we pay in the, and it's actually higher, I've been using 600 rentals. If there's $1,500, 1,500 rentals, this number's even larger. But it's close to a million dollars in cleaning costs that's paid to the cleaners in Buncombe County. And it'll be three times that if it's 1,500. In closing, please don't use a zoning ordinance as a tool to control competition and to protect hoteliers at the expense of other businesses and more importantly, individual rights. Controlling competition is not the purpose of a zoning ordinance, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Excuse me, John. Lady in the back, please.
Hi, my name is Lynn Carlson. I am a property owner in Asheville. I own both Bed and Breakfast in Monford Historic District, and we also own a condo over in Biltmore Village, which we use as a residential, live in ourselves. And that is above businesses. I'm very offended by the intimation that we're afraid of competition. I don't think that's the issue here at all. When the Indigo Hotel went in Asheville, that was my competition. My bookings went down. It's not from a vacation rental. But the Indigo Hotel came in and it went through planning and zoning, it abided by all the ordinances, it was a risk I knew when I started business, and it has a right to be there as a business. Do I like it? No, you wouldn't like it either. But it's reality when you run a business. So, my objection is not to competition. If I, we're afraid of competition, we have how many bed and breakfasts? Kelly might know better than I. I think we've got 45 in Asheville area. My question is, don't we already have a lot of vacation rentals out there? And two, don't we have a lot of land where there's more available to put in vacation rentals without going into the residential neighborhoods? That's my concern. And I'm not sure that I see the need. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Winkenwater?
I wasn't going to speak today. I mainly came to listen until you hear some of the discussion and I understand everybody here has a position that they defend and that's understandable. Let me make a couple of things very clear. In talking with the hoteliers, as Kelly mentioned, the hotel industry is not against vacation rentals or the idea of being able to rent your home for vacations. I don't think that's accurate. It's been brought up that the hotels are against vacation rentals. I may have other opinions as it regards to homeowner, but that's not why I'm here and that's not where my concerns are. I guess I reject and resent what's been stated, and I'm sure it's aimed at all the hotel people, that we are afraid of competition, to the gentleman that owns the Graybeard. We've been in business here for 70 years in the hotel business and I don't think we're afraid of any competition and never have been. So, let's clear that up right now. We're not here because we're afraid of competition. What we're concerned about is not vacation rentals, not all your nice homes that the folks that own homes choose to rent them to folks that want to come up and rent for six months, or they may want to come for a month, or they may even want to, like the Beaches, come and rent and bring their family for a week. I agree. That is an indirect competition for the hotel business, but not really a direct competition. What we're concerned about is it changing from true vacation rentals, weekly and monthly, to having homes that get into the overnight lodging business, that do not play by the same rules that the hotels play by when it comes to all the levels that we've discussed many times, from the health regulations by the county to fire and safety, to all kinds of accommodation and all the requirements that the hotels and bed and breakfast are required to meet. That's an unfair level playing field. That's not being afraid of competition, that's folks being in the hotel business with a total different set of rules and regulations that they abide by. Again, I restate, we are not against vacation rentals. I understand people come here to rent a home for a week or a month. We have a problem and an issue with turning those vacation homes into overnight hotels that are in competition but do not play by the same rules and regulations and requirements that we play by to operate our hotels every day.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any matter?
I'll give you another card. My name is Liz Widerhold. Think you know how to spell it by now. I try not to repeat myself. I will repeat myself only on one point, and that is that this is a county planning board, not a city planning board. And I think that's important. And it sometimes is confusing to people. I actually have had several people call me and ask me about this issue. Oh, is it going to be allowed in the city? It's not going to be allowed in the city. Yes, the city is in the county, you're a county resident, but you're a city resident. And I think that has to be clarified, that when we look at a zoning map, what we're talking about is quite a, quite a distance from the city. We're in the unincorporated portions of the county, not the incorporated portions of the county. And I know you all know that, but I don't know that all the public knows that. And this is also not an HOA meeting where we're trying to decide whether we're going to change our restrictive covenants in a restricted community. And that's the job of an HOA and that's the job of subdivision covenants. As far as unfair competition goes, or competition goes, or anything along those lines, the issue with trying to redefine this is that our average vacation rental in this community is not like the Beach. People don't often, they often come here for long weekends. We have a lot of two- and three-night stays. I will say that I think we can generously assume that 99.9% of any legitimate vacation rental homeowner does not rent by the night, one night, and that could be eliminated. I don't know that anyone would argue with that. And I think that's a quick and easy compromise to say that this definition could be changed to two nights or more, and no one would argue. The question of whether it's okay to operate a business in a residential district, I think has been visited. We have, we allow home-based businesses in residential districts and we allow long-term rentals in residential districts. If a vacation rental is a business, then a long-term rental is a business. And that means we'd have to restrict all residential neighborhoods to owner occupants only to eliminate it, which would be the job of the subdivision and the covenants. So, again, I don't think that's a valid point. I would make the following suggested changes. The first is to change the definition for a vacation rental to be two nights or longer or on a weekly basis, blah, 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 as the rest of it already reads. The second is to review the chart. I'm concerned that the vacation rental complex, which is just two homes or more, which I own, in the open-use district would become a conditional use. And I don't think that was intended. And I also would certainly look at commercial districts and, you know, other high-density districts. I think that particular portion needs to go back to the way it was, which was a permitted use in the open use and in those more dense districts. And finally, to incorporate a complaint-driven system in the ordinance that simply says that, you know, complaints will be tracked and recorded and so on and so forth per SB 683 compliant, so on and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Maggie Smith, S-M-I-T-H, Buncombe County resident, and I live in Beaver Dam. And I actually have more questions than comments, and maybe somebody can help me out. If you live in a gated community in a homeowners' association, can't the homeowners' association disallow vacation rentals? In a document, in a...
It's my understanding that they can.
Okay, so...
But I'm not a lawyer.
If you're going to move into a community, you'd want to look at that document, okay. And does the sheriff's office respond to noise complaints? I'm thinking, yes, he's a good guy. Okay. So, if that happens twice in an eight-month period or a week period, would the county feel that they're, that's breaking any of, you know, could you go in and take a look at that point if the sheriff's office were to go in and find, you know, a problem?
You're talking about within this new...
Senate bill or...
No, no. Before we look at that, that's my next question, but...
Hey, I don't know if we need to turn this into a question-and-answer session, but that's not generally the rules of public comment.
You're just going, you're going to run out of time.
Yeah, I'm cool. All right, all right.
Just to let you know.
And yes, I believe that we have rentals in Beaver Dam, long-term condo rentals, and is that not using your property? Is that not a business? So, I am obviously for the vacation rentals and I do agree that if the hotel folks are going to join on, as long as there's a two-, three-night agreement, I think that would be great and we'd all be happy together. So, thanks a lot for your time. Bye.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to get up and speak? Again, it can be something just regarding vacation rentals. We're here for everybody. We're here for everybody today. Having seen none, I guess we'll just close the, excuse me.
I do have one question for Michael. Senate Bill 683, Section C, the last sentence indicates, "Except as provided in Section D of the section levy a special fee or tax on residential rental property that is not also levied against other commercial and residential properties." Would that apply to the occupancy tax?
I wouldn't think so, no.
So the occupancy tax could be imposed on short-term rentals?
We, we have to look at how this thing reads, and they are talking about housing ordinances. I don't think they're talking about those other kinds of taxes.
So this in no way changes that. It can be applied. This doesn't eliminate the ability to apply the occupancy tax on short-term rentals?
I don't think so, no.
But we don't know yet. I mean, I know Mike's got a chance to...
Yeah, I mean, I would rather digest it for a while before I try to give you an opinion on that.
Michael, just, I know you've helped identify some further clarifications for Chip's Graybeard, because he runs multiple properties, he does collect occupancy taxes.
Kelly, can you talk us into the right...
As being five or more units, yeah.
Five or more?
Yes.
Five or more is...
Five or more houses.
Is that a state or a county-driven number?
The TDA ordinances are written, and, you know, as it applies to Buncombe County, it's five or more units.
Most counties are just, if you have more, you have to pay more. So I sell 99 other counties. But that is... Kelly Miller, vacation rental, and I don't go through a Graybeard, and I rent it by myself, I do not collect occupancy taxes. Unless you have more than five.
Five or more units, yes.
Five or more units, but not five or more beds, five or more units.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Hughes?
That's it.
Michelle, did you have something you want to say?
No, I just think that this is, I mean, obviously, y'all know that I've worked in hotels and Bed and Breakfast and many rentals and all forms and fashions of anyone in this room for a long time, ever since I was 18. And I was cleaning Bed and Breakfast rooms at 5:00 a.m., and then I'd go and run a honeymoon resort at night. So this is definitely cottages and all kinds of things. It does run the gamut. And I would say that, you know, this right here, until we know more about what we can or can't do, is really, there's nothing we can do. We can't start going down a road and regulating something that they're going to trump later. So I would just say that we need to think about how we can protect the neighborhood people. I think that's the basis and the most fear, people who have HOAs in place, who aren't being able to enforce them, or have, you know, neighbors complaining. That, to me, would be, is the meat of this. How can we do that in however fashion, depending on how you interpret this, Mike? We can do that moving forward, I think, would alleviate a lot of the problems we're seeing here, so.
Well, we've got, our normal regularly scheduled meeting would be Monday, July 4th, and obviously, it's not going to be July 4th, it'll be July 11th. So we've got about three weeks until we convene again. And I know Mike's going to review the legislation and see where that puts us with regard to regulating anything, if anything. And in the meantime, I think that, I think we need to continue to digest, of course, what we've heard today and the last time, and I will get with staff and John and meet and see if we can provide a little direction before we meet next time, which will be July 11th, and email each of you and let you know kind of where we're headed, if that's okay. And we'll just move forward. It's going to, obviously, this has slowed down the process a little bit, I think, from what I promised, or I indicated we'd try to do at our last meeting, but we'll see, we'll see what happens. But I think that's about all we can do at this time. Again, we're going to have to come back and consider whether we're going to allow it or not in these areas that are zoned R1, R2, Beaver Dam, RLD, or whether it's a conditional use or whatever. That's one of the options as well, we might consider in these areas. But anyway, having said that, you know, I'm closing the public comment session. I don't think I ever got to that. And we'll move forward from there. I'm sure we'll see each of you July 11th. Hopefully, we'll make some progress after the meeting of the 11th. Does anyone else have anything or suggestions? Joe, you got anything?
I just want to compliment the citizens of Buncombe County for coming here. This board addresses a number of issues throughout a year, and we see no one here, not a single person. And the board does have some unilateral authority to approve things that never go before the commissioners. So I would suggest you talk with your friends, your neighbors, and business colleagues to take more interest in the public process, because there was a time when this board didn't receive anyone from the public. We've come a long, long ways. So please exercise the democratic process and come here and speak for, against, advisory, whatever. And all the information is published on the county website. You can go to the Planning Department link. You can see the agendas. Some of you probably don't even know that this meeting is streamed live on the internet, and the videos are saved on the website, and you can go and see them. So I think it's terrific that we see this number of people out here. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you. Well said, and I'll echo that as well. And just as an example, back last fall, I guess it was, when we first took on the topic of vacation rentals, coincidentally, we were talking about asphalt plant locations at the same time. And I bet you we had, when it came to public comment, what did we have, four or something like that? I mean, it was so minimal, which really surprised me. So anyway, I do think this is healthy, and we'll work through it. Having said so, do I have a motion adjourned?
I move.
Okay, we've got a motion to second by Mr. Hughes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank all of you for coming, too.